Good afternoon and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing for Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, relative to Bill 2021-1085. And for everyone watching, I'm Bobby Wilson. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. And I am currently on the line right now. We have Councilwoman Strasburger, and there may be other members that join as we continue. Clark, will you please read the title of the bill?
Absolutely. Bill 1085, ordinance amendment and supplement in the Pittsburgh Code Title IX, Zoning Code, Article VI, Development Standards, Chapter 914, Parking, Loading, and Access by Adding a New Section 91409-J, Parking Access for Single-Unit Attached Residential Uses to Require Rear or Side Access to Off-Street Parking Spaces for Single-Family Attached Dwellings.
Thank you. And I'll mention other members as they join. And our first sort of business will be a presentation. And the presentation is will be presented by Andrea Lavine Kosis and from the City's Plan Department. And then we'll have, following that, we'll have the testimony of all the registered speakers. So Andrea, I'm not sure, do you have the ability to share a screen if you have a presentation?
I sure do. Give me one second and I'll get this going.
Yeah, take your time. Not in a rush at all.
All right, can y'all see that?
Yes, yes.
All right, we are here to speak with you this afternoon about the proposed expansion of RIV curb cut standards, the single unit attached residential uses throughout the city. We are going to review how we got here today, and then I'll go into detail about the standards themselves. In 2020, the Department of City Planning proposed the elimination of minimum parking requirements for single-family attached dwellings, also known as townhomes. At its meeting of June of last year, the Planning Commission made two recommendations. The first recommendation was that City Council approve the proposed amendment. Their second was that city staff and council undertake fact finding around the citywide elimination of or limitation on the placement of curb cuts, and that we draft legislation based on those findings. The proposal that we're here to talk with you about today is a direct result of that charge. And we would also like to note that City Council unanimously approved the elimination of minimum parking requirements for townhomes on October of last year. So we spoke with Planning Commission about the proposed expansion of existing RIV curb cut standards to single-family attached uses citywide. And at their meeting on February 23rd of this year, they recommended that City Council approve the proposed amendment and that we continue researching additional motions per their charge last year. The curb cut standards that we are referring to were developed during the riverfront rezoning process that lasted from 2016 to 2018. Those standards currently apply to townhome uses in the RIV zoning area. And this map shows the location of those uses where townhomes are allowed by right, specifically in RIV zoning. This map shows areas throughout the city where townhomes are allowed by right. And as you can see, the expansion of the curb cut standards would have an impact throughout the city. So what we are proposing is are some additions to Section 91409. We would like to add 91409-J1, Single-Unit Attached Residential Uses Curb Cut Standards. And so these standards have three parts. So the first part says that garages and parking spaces must be accessed from the rear yard if rear yard access is available. And the photo that accompanies this slide shows a set of townhomes that are all accessing their parking via the way behind the townhomes. And you can also see that that creates a sidewalk environment on the main street that is not interrupted by curb cuts and offers continuous on-street parking along that side of the street. The second part of these standards say that corner lots with or without rear access may alternatively access garages and parking spaces from the exterior side yard. This slide shows a diagram of six townhomes. Rather than each townhome having its own individual curb cut that leads to a garage in the front, these six townhomes are accessing parking via one single curb cut that is located around the corner, not on the main street. And that is a condition that this standard refers to. And then finally, it says that in cases where front-loaded garage design is the remaining option, shared driveways with one curb cut are encouraged. This rendering shows a townhome development where 12 townhomes are served by a single curb cut. And you can see that what that does is create an unimpeded sidewalk with plenty of room for street trees as well as on-street parking. What these standards do really is reduce the number of curb cuts that are going to interrupt sidewalks, and this has a number of benefits. So according to Safe Kids Worldwide, 39% of deaths from accidental car backovers happen in a driveway at home, an apartment parking lot, or a townhome complex. So reducing the number of curb cuts crossing sidewalks is going to limit the number of conflict points between cars and pedestrians, thus improving pedestrian safety. Reducing the number of curb cuts also preserves curb space for public on-street parking. It's illustrated by this photograph of cars parallel parked along the edge of a street. Fewer curb cuts interrupting a sidewalk means you also have more space to plant street trees. This photograph shows two rows of townhomes that do not have curb cuts leading to front-loaded garages, and instead, there is a really healthy urban tree canopy on the street as well as ample on-street parking. And then finally, this really respects the character of our neighborhoods that were built before widespread automobile use. This is an illustration of an infill townhome that rather than having a front-loaded garage with its own individual curb cut, instead uses the front space for a stoop and some landscaping. And you can see that it blends very harmoniously in with its pre-existing neighbors. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Andrea.
Do you need to answer any questions?
I believe we'll go to the speakers that have attended this hearing. I have, well, first off, thank you very much for that presentation. We're also joined by Director Dash of the Pittsburgh City Planning Department. Let's see here, let me get my list and pull it up. All right. So when I hear testimony from registered speakers, you please give your name and address for the public record. Each speaker will have three minutes to address counsel. Our first speaker is David Brangin.
Good afternoon. My name is Dave Brangin. I'm the Executive Director of Lawrenceville United, located at 11852 Street. I'm here to speak in support of the zoning code text amendments of Council Bill 2021-1085, excuse me, and request that the city again go further. First, I want to commend Mayor Paduto and City Planning for taking additional steps to improve pedestrian safety, enhance neighborhood walkability, and promote non-vehicular mobility. When the administration proposed dropping minimum parking requirements for single-family attached homes, a group of community organizations in rowhouse neighborhoods came together to express our support and asked that the city take additional steps to meet the goals of the legislation. Specifically, we called for minimally replicating the curb cut design standards in the RIV zone into R1A zones. We're grateful for the mayor's administration and City Planning for taking this feedback and implementing our request quickly. As City Planning's presentation demonstrated so well, front-facing off-street parking, integral garages, and their corresponding driveway curb cuts do significant and long-lasting damage to the essential character of rowhouse neighborhoods. They remove public on-street parking, increase vehicle trips, threaten safety and accessibility, drive up housing costs, permanently eliminate the ability to plant street trees, and demote neighborly interaction. This legislation goes a step further than eliminating the parking minimum, and this is a stride in the right direction to limiting the propagation of driveway curb cuts on otherwise walkable blocks, as we certainly have seen instances where developers, to save money or out of simply poor design choices, have attempted to create off-street parking in the front when rear access existed. However, we must acknowledge the limits of even this new legislation. For one thing, it only applies to single-family attached dwellings and not to R1A zones, which leaves a lot of residential projects exempt in neighborhoods like Lawrenceville, while most of our R1A neighborhoods have lots of single-unit detached dwellings interspersed with our rowhomes. And while we share the same, they share the same blocks, the same public off-street parking, and the same sidewalks, detached homes don't have to follow this design standard under this legislation. So an improvement in our minds would be to include the design standard for any use within R1A zones, similar to the way that the language appears in the RIV zone. Beyond this, it must also be noted that many parcels in Lawrenceville do not have access to rear alleyways, yet front-facing off-street parking still does the same damage. Consequently, further action is still needed, and we want to again reiterate our call for further legislation that restricts the use of front-facing driveway curb cuts and gives communities like ours the tools to oppose them when they harm the neighborhood fabric. So we ask that City Council pass this ordinance, and our coalition of neighborhood groups, bike pedestrian groups, and disability advocacy organizations would love to work directly with the city to identify additional measures to give to communities the tools to reduce driveway curb cuts when they harm mobility in our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. For the record, we're joined by Councilwoman Gross, and our next speaker is Sam Spearing.
Hi, my name is Sam Spearing. I'm a Bloomfield resident on South Matilda Street and the Housing and Mobility Coordinator with Bloomfield Development Corporation. I'm here today to speak on behalf of Bloomfield Development Corporation and say that we're supportive of the currently proposed zoning code text amendment and the steps that it takes to preserve our dense, walkable, and accessible neighborhoods. Curb cuts on otherwise pedestrian-friendly streets damage the walkability and safety of our neighborhood. This amendment is a step in the right direction to preserve the values of our neighborhoods. However, we do still believe that more can be done to preserve the safety of our rowhome neighborhoods. When we spoke previously in front of City Council on the last R1A parking amendment along with other organizations, we did ask that the RIV standards be applied to R1A zones. And we feel that this proposed change does fall slightly short of that goal by only applying to single-family attached usages, and we're concerned that this creates the opportunity for other usages within our R1A zones to avoid the curb cut standards that are laid out within this legislation. Because of our concerns about the limited application of the RIV standards in our R1A zones, we do encourage the consideration of expanding the application to include all development in our R1A zones in order to best preserve the density and walkability in our neighborhoods. We also believe that a more rigorous limitation of curb cuts in new developments in our R1A zones can help to drive down building costs and create more affordable single-family homes in our dense neighborhoods. We support the passage of the amendment currently in front of council and look forward to continuing the conversation about how to limit the negative impacts of curb cuts in neighborhoods like Bloomfield. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Emily Persico.
Good afternoon. My name is Emily Persico, and I'm a Community Development Manager with Lawrenceville Corporation, speaking in support of this legislation. LC is located at 143rd Street and is a nonprofit with the mission to serve as a catalyst and conduit for responsible growth and reinvestment in Lawrenceville. We sincerely appreciate your work and the Paduto Administration's leadership to address the growing harm caused by curb cuts in dense urban communities like ours. Yet while this legislation is certainly a significant step in the right direction, we echo concerns expressed here today and urge City Council to go one step further to expand curb cut design standards to all uses along primary streets in R1A neighborhoods. In recent years, hundreds of new curb cuts have interrupted neighborhood sidewalks for front-facing integral garages in Lawrenceville, impairing pedestrian safety and neighborhood walkability, and prioritizing private vehicles over public space. As legislation now stands, public amenities like uninterrupted accessible sidewalks, public on-street parking, and space for street trees are able to be continually appropriated for private use, driving up housing costs while detracting from neighborhood quality. As a community development corporation and affordable housing developer, LC is acutely aware of the extra costs imposed by current off-street parking requirements that deplete already stretched public resources for affordable housing. To make matters worse, these requirements also give developers the ability to drive up housing prices for market rate projects, exacerbating the challenges of gentrification and displacement faced by Lawrenceville and so many other R1A neighborhoods. Integral garages on primary streets in R1A neighborhoods impose too great a public cost to be permitted to continue unchecked. That is why we are today, we are here today to call upon City Council to take a more holistic approach to driveway curb cuts and consider additional measures to limit their propagation, especially in dense, walkable, transit-rich neighborhoods like Lawrenceville. Single-family detached homes and other uses that are often situated within rowhouse blocks in R1A neighborhoods should not be exempted from necessary parking standards that preserve urban density, quality of life, and affordability. Thus, we urge you to extend this legislation to either prohibit or acquire a special exemption or variance for curb cuts for all uses along primary streets in R1A neighborhoods, and to implement the RIV's curb cut design standards. We truly appreciate your time, and we hope you will consider our best as you review this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ikona Hamaquina. All right, we'll just move on to the next speaker, and we'll move that position down to the end. I'll call on Ikona Hamaquina again at the end. Our next speaker is Allison Keating. Hello? I think it's star, was it, to take yourself off mute? Star six?
All right. Hi, yeah, this is Allison. Sorry for the noise. I'm outside. I don't know if that's, if you ever hear that. So, okay, thank you. So my name's Allison Keating. I live in Manchester. I'm speaking on behalf of, speaking on behalf of Pittsburghers Republic Transit, which is a local organization that represents riders and transit workers in the region and beyond. And our interest is that off-street parking raises housing prices, making neighborhoods unaffordable for many incomes. And it also decreases ridership, making the transit system less sustainable. My neighborhood in Manchester is partially an R1A neighborhood and is also R2 and RM. And I guess I just want to briefly talk about like what zoning code says and does. It's basically like the city's vision for what they want to see in communities. And when, what, I guess what I want to say is that I think it, I think it's been pretty easy to expand this suggestion to most residential and commercial area districts, because it's just a nudge. It's not, it's not a demand. It's just, it's just a nudge, and it's the city saying, hey, you know, we want walkable streets. If you're going to build something new, we want something walkable. We want something that is, you know, friendly to everybody and, you know, it fits in with, you know, old Pittsburgh. And I also, I also want to talk about the gap between developers and buyers. Sometimes developers might not, like, they think they understand the market, but people are really happy living in the neighborhood as they exist. And, you know, so, so they, they end up maybe building things that they think people want, but they don't understand, you know, so there's just a gap between developers and buyers. And I think the city can step in and help developers understand the markets a bit better. And they do that through the zoning code. So, um, yeah, so that's, you know, please do this and then do more. Thank you. That's all. Bye-bye.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Eric Boer. Eric, do we have you on the?
This is John Axtell. I've been told to unmute. Can I speak now?
In my, I see Eric now. You're actually next, John.
I can wait.
All right, thank you. Eric, you can?
Sorry, I clicked unmute like three times. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, you're, yep.
Perfect, great. Hi, my name is Eric Boer, and I reside at 4904 Hatfield Street in Lawrenceville. I'm the Advocacy Director of Bike Pittsburgh. We're a 3,500-member nonprofit bicycle and pedestrian advocacy organization. We're headquartered in Lawrenceville, and I myself have lived in the neighborhood for 11 years. I wanted to express our support for the proposed amendment to reduce the number of driveway curb cuts across our sidewalks within residential attached areas. I've seen firsthand the damage that these driveway curb cuts do to the fabric and charm of our neighborhoods, especially in Lawrenceville. In a city where about a quarter of households have no access to a vehicle, we need to ensure users of all modes, especially those who rely on transit, walking, and bicycling, don't get pushed aside for private vehicle storage. We commend and appreciate the direction of reducing driveways and driveway curb cuts across our sidewalks and support the amendment. While in support of the change and applaud this reform, we feel that ultimately our work is not done, and we would like to see an expansion of this change to improve pedestrian safety, enhance walkability, and promote non-motor vehicle mobility across all residential zones and types within the city. I'd like to thank city staff, council, and the Paduto Administration for pursuing this change, and look forward to continuing this work in a bolder, more comprehensive manner moving forward. Thanks, and have a good afternoon.
Thank you. And our next speaker is John Axtell. Hi, John, it's. He was here just a second ago before. I guess I should have taken him up on letting him speak before Eric. Okay, there we go. John Axtell, you have three minutes?
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Thank you. My name is John Axtell. I live on South Pacific Avenue in Friendship. I also own property on Main Street in Lawrenceville, where I lived from 1982 through the late 90s. I'm active in community groups in both Friendship and Lawrenceville. I'm going to speak in support of this amendment. I want to especially thank the planning staff for their having been responsive to this issue when it was raised by Lawrenceville residents and organizations. I want to thank council for having passed the previous amendment which permitted the elimination of the R1A parking requirement. I think this is the next, necessary next step, and like other speakers, I want to say that I think there's every reason for all residential zoning districts to provide for the requirement that parking only be accessed from alleys if alleys are available at a property. The benefits of having our primary streets unbroken by driveways and curb cuts are great. I think that it redresses the balance between the rights of pedestrians and car operators. And I certainly hope that council only passes the amendment that's before you, but also considers further legislation. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And I want to just go back to someone that was not on the line that registered to speak. Madam Clark is there, is Ikona Hamaquina in the?
She's not here.
Okay, thank you. So having as Austin, move ahead a little bit. So thanks, thank you for everyone for your testimony, and I want to move to members. And I'll go in the order that they, they came into the Zoom call here. So Councilwoman Strasburger, if you have comment?
Thank you. My only question out of curiosity is, well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for chairing this meeting, and for all the speakers who came out today, and especially the work of getting staff as well. I, my only question out of curiosity is where we still have the kind of gap or discrepancy between what we are proposing today or what is being proposed before us and discussed today and the call for, for greater inclusion for single, for those that are not single-family homes into this proposed amendment? So I've been a little out of the loop. I apologize that I'm making you kind of go back and describe the reason behind why we're doing it this way rather than the way that all the speakers asked for, but any kind of information you have for me would be appreciated.
Director, I'm not sure if you want to?
Yeah, I can respond to that. So, you know, I think that when, you know, most of our parking regulations are done by use, and so the standard right now is for single-family attached dwellings that they had a parking requirement. We, the first step was that we, you know, the council had passed was that we eliminated that parking requirement for that use. Other, outside of, you know, the RIV and zoning administrator, Lamon, correct me if there's any, you know, you know, that there might be, you know, in some of the specially planned districts, most of our, most of our plan, most of our parking requirements are by use and not by district. And so we felt that as we were looking through the issue here, which the issue, you know, was a lot around, around these rowhouse neighborhoods and the garage condition that we see in the front and, you know, those, you know, those conflicts that they create with sidewalks and with on-street parking and other items, that we would be addressing that, you know, by the use and understanding that that is a common condition of, you know, of that, of that particular use. And therefore, what we needed to address as opposed to only addressing that in the R1A areas, which on one of the earlier slides that Andrea presented, you know, there are a lot of areas where we see rowhouse, you know, where we see rowhouse neighborhoods that are, you know, that are zoned other than just R1A. So they may be zoned RM primarily in the Hill District. There are places that, you know, in the Manchester neighborhood and others that are zoned R2. So there, you know, we see this condition in a lot more than just the R1A districts. And so wanted to apply it to the use and not to the district.
I think I have more to learn and more to explore here, but I appreciate that initial answer and look forward to further conversations around us with a number of parties, but that's all I have for now. Thanks, thanks to everyone.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Gross, you have any comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was listening and remembering that it's difficult for most people to understand the kind of the complexity of our land use to where there's zones on a zoning map, which says like which parcel out of 140,000 parcels in the city or so are in one of these categories that we've been talking about, R1A, or was it 1M or just RM, and then the RIV? So like, each property is only in one of those zoning categories. It had to be in like one category or the other. But then these use tables, and for some reason, I think of that as like a flat, vertical, like horizontal surface, but then I think of the use tables and kind of vertical in my mind's eye for no good reason, or like, you know, you can use, do these different things, like have a pharmacy or not. Or like, you know, you can do these different things, like have a pharmacy or not have a pharmacy or, you know, have, you know, a single family or have a different kind of business in a use table. Right? Am I saying all this right? And then, you know, different zoning categories kind of point to the different, the use tables. So that's why you can have a kind of, it's not really like a business occupancy, but this building form of a single-family detached or a townhouse attached in more than one of the zoning categories. Did I say that right?
I understand what you're saying, yes.
Okay, good. So I think that's vaguely how I understand it. And so then when we make amendments, we have to decide whether we're going to do it on the map or if we're going to do it in the table, which could apply to more than one category of the map. But it doesn't mean, or maybe we should do both in order to satisfy this need. So, okay, having under, like just tried to recap for my own sanity, kind of what, you know, is the reason where it was given for having an amendment to the use table and not to the map. I really heard loudly and clearly what our speakers spoke to, our public commentators said today, because that is what I hear from my district, right? These driveways may have made my street dangerous or it wasn't dangerous before. We didn't have these driveways here. This neighborhood is super highly densely, you know, small lot lines. Some of the lot lines in Lawrenceville are 15 feet, right? It's like every 15 feet is a new house. And so it's, there's a lot of people in a small amount of space. And especially, it's almost like the sidewalks are what we think of as primary streets. There's like people traffic on those sidewalks. There's a lot of people in a narrow city sidewalk and they get heavy, heavy use. And they get all kinds of users. So we have people in wheelchairs. We have people with vision problems. We have, you know, little kids on tricycles and we have the seniors. And having there suddenly be the driveways crammed in has really got us worried just frankly about your safety on the sidewalk. Because suddenly now that's a, that's car space instead of a non-car space. And I just wanted to reiterate and emphasize that. And so, you know, it isn't just an aesthetic that people are concerned about. And yet there is also that, right? So on the tree-lined, walkable streets, right, or sidewalk area that you once had, that you've, that we've kind of taken that away from people and from the neighborhood as a whole. Because it's not just the residents on that street. Again, people are not using their cars. When I lived in Bloomfield, pre-pandemic, prebeing a councilperson, for sure, this is some, you know, 10 years ago, I sometimes didn't even move my own car for three weeks at a time. And so you're really, you're going places on foot and you're going past other people's blocks where you don't even live to try to get to, to meet your needs or to go about your day. And so it really does change your, I think it removes some of your safety and diminishes your mobility if you're not in a car. And I think that is the opposite of what we're trying to do and what we espouse as a body here at city council. And certainly goes against, I think, our notion of what are complete streets. And it privatizes that space in a way, you know. And then we run into problems about like, well, someone's car sticking out and, you know, into the sidewalk and pedestrian space. I've seen that happen. And full disclosure, my driveway is, you know, my garage, detached garage of my house was built in 1910 and it has a little driveway and it's not on an alley. The rear of our street is also a public street. And so I'm very mindful that my car does fit if I've got it in the space, that it's in my property and not in the city sidewalk. But we've seen that be a problem in neighborhoods that have these kinds of, we call them curb cuts, but they are driveways, personally, you know, private driveways that are kind of taking away that sidewalk space and that curb length in an area where I have so much residential parking permit activity. Every time these driveway permits are granted, we have lost curb lengths that we've already sold residential parking permits to. And so there really are competing interests here. So there's that. There's just many, many reasons for me in the areas of R1A that I represent that speak to a higher bar, if not an outright exclusion. And we have many people who think they should be excluded entirely. And I do want to emphasize that I have written down here and it's something that I've heard many times. Adding car storage adds cost. It adds a tremendous amount of cost. Usually we're talking about it in the large multi-units that, you know, you have seen as a council. Thousands of units have been added in my council district over the last six or seven years. And with our parking requirements for those large multi-units, you're adding millions of dollars to the construction cost that is carried through onto the rents that are being charged. But I think there's a parallel here with the single-family units as well. And we've literally seen those discussions happen at community meetings with developers. Like, well, I could bring down the costs, but I can't because I need this amount of square footage or this integral garage because there's nowhere else to put it. Because they're building out to the lot lines, they're really, really gobbling up their very tiny lots. And so they're putting these integral garages in and that takes away the living space and it drives up the total cost of the project and to the price if it's a for-sale unit. So for all those reasons, I just wanted to affirm what we heard in public comment and of course thank the commenters for coming out and being so clear in their comments and suggestions. And as always, thank you to the, to the planning and zoning departments who are helping us adjust to these changing realities and these changing market pressures, especially in our city neighborhood. So thank you, Mr. Chair. That was longer than I expected, but this is a really big topic for the residents of my district. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I just have a few comments. You know, I want to thank the whole department of city planning and everyone that works with the zoning, within the public parts of, you know, what all took place prior to this. I was curious, you know, what is the, what is the process to implement this in other zones? So we're doing the use in one zone and then with other zones, what, just so we can, just so the public can understand what that process is?
Sure. So, you know, I mean, since a lot of our parking requirements are by use, I think that, you know, I think we hear what some of the people testifying have stated. I think that that might come with greater parking reform to the zoning code. And I think that as DOMI completes their 2070 vision and we complete the work of forging PGHTC Conference of Planning effort, which has a mobility working group that's a part of that. You know, I think that we would see a lot of recommendations that would come around that relative to parking citywide. And I think that that might enable the planning department to then have the direction to be able to create, you know, larger amendments to city council relative to parking and parking reform. So, you know, I think that concluding, you know, including those two plans will be able to help us think through what comes next relative to changing parking regulations in the city.
All right, thanks. I'm looking forward to that. A couple of comments that I had were, you know, I represent a district that has a lot of people that have moved in. You know, a lot of people have been there for a long time, but there was a, you know, a large amount of people throughout the past, oh, could be since the 80s, 30 years that have moved in and meticulously fixed up their house. And, you know, they like the way they're, you know, they want to keep the neighborhood intact the way it was 100 years ago. And so I see this as a way to continue that and to not, you know, destroy the fabric of what that neighborhood, you know, looks like. I think that they like that, you know, for many reasons, because of, you know, without the curb cuts, without the, you know, you know, people are already buying those houses already. They're interested in the way it functions currently. You know, so the, you know, so anything moving forward, I like, I like to see this type of improvement. And also, you know, in regards to bicyclists, you know, we're working on with the Move Forward Campaign and they've presented to the, their plan throughout my neighborhood, I'm sorry, my district, you know, there have been challenges with siting. So every curb cut increases the, I mean, decreases the amount of parking, which, you know, everyone's concerned about their parking being taken away. But also, you know, it's just one more risk for the cyclist with these curb cuts. And so that's another big, you know, just being involved within the planning and the public discussion of bike lanes being, you know, added to different streets, our neighborhood streets. It creates this large buffer and, you know, I know that no one from DOMI is on the line, but I'm off to ask them, you know, it creates like this five, like a, like 10 feet, you know, of, you know, more thermoplastic that has to go down. And so, you know, it's obvious that it creates this risk to even, you know, other users on the street. So, yeah, I'm definitely looking forward to this, you know, come before standing committee so we can discuss this further and hopefully pass. And looking forward to other, you know, other, you know, additional implementations in the future to other zones. So thank you. I don't have any other further comment. I appreciate, you know, everyone. I appreciate Andrea, Corey, Director Dash. And let's see, and thank you, you know, to Councilwoman Strassberger and Gross to come to this very important public hearing. Does anyone else have any further comment?
I just want to say sorry I was late. I was in another call and had to jump off.
That's fine. I always feel weird saying like, and for the records, you know, someone's supposed to join, like definitely calls you out.
Like a student and teacher, I know.
Yeah. All right. So having exhausted the business of the public hearing, this meeting is adjourned.